Good evening. We hereby call to order the Wednesday, October 17th, 2022.
Thank you. We hereby call to order the Wednesday, August 17th, 2022, regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Excuse me. We'll start with a confirmation and roll call.
Thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with open-meeting law, and we have member Ernest Bioski on teleconference, and members Matt D. Teresa and Steve Rudd are absent from the meeting.
Thank you very much. So next, would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, on mission, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the next folks to get seated, so the next item is a general public comment period. Comments heard during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda. Each person has up to five minutes to speak. Now, I would say to all here that each of the items are public hearings, and so you'll have an opportunity to speak during that particular item, and so you'd have an opportunity to hear the staff comments if you so choose. Otherwise, if anyone wishes to be heard at this time on any matters on the agenda, please rise, go to the podium, and state your name.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission members and staff. Steve Walton. And I would like to wait for the item, but I have another appointment, so I've got to address it now in case the time doesn't allow. And this is on item number five, the land management process 22-043. I want to start off by making my comments that I think the concept is great for Boulder City as a concept. And I know personally the principle involved in this, longtime Boulder City resident who really wants to see the best for our community, and I acknowledge that and respect the group that is involved in it. But I do want to express some concerns. And there are some concerns that you see in your packet from golf course staff and public works staff and airport staff, right? And I share those concerns, so I won't touch on those much. But I do think something that is worth noting, the land management process is the very beginning of this, right? I know it's a recommendation to council, then it comes back for zoning if it passes, and back and forth. So it's a process, but to get out in front of it, to express our community opinions is important. So I think this kind of teeters on two issues of the controlled growth ordinance. You know, we know that anything over one acre for development needs to be for sale that the city owns needs to be voted on by the community, right? And so this is 74 acres, and it is a type of residential occupancy, even though it would be considered commercial zoning once it got through the zoning process, if it gets that far. And so I feel that it's gray at best to proceed with designating this as an appropriate use for the land because of the potential use of a residential, in my opinion, right, that's my statement, a residential-style occupancy, even though it would be zoned commercial, right? It would have people there while they would have a limit on their stay. It still would be continuously occupied by residents, if you will, or occupants, right? And it's a tourism-driving enterprise, and again, that's why I say I think the concept is great for Boulder City. But to proceed without that community input for this type of development, I think, is a little on the gray area of our controlled growth ordinance for selling land and using it. Now, because I've understood there's been talk about leasing it to the commercial enterprise so that the city would maintain control, so that it can't be sold and subdivided, and people maintain continuous occupancy there. And that would be a prudent thing to do, right? But again, because it's the style of occupancy that I think it starts to flirt with the other side of our ordinance that really the community shouldn't be involved in. So that's a concern that I want to express to the Planning Commission for consideration with the other considerations. And then the final thing is that, you know, in our strategic plan, it talks about the fact that we, as Boulder City residents, value our open lands, right? And between Veterans Memorial Parkway to the west, to the 95 highway, between the I-11 and Boulder City Parkway, that big square, other than the El Dorado nine holes of the golf course, there is zero development there, nothing. And I think we're starting to then encroach on what we value as our open land in that area. And I appreciate the fact that the applicants have said that, you know, the slope is such that it wouldn't be quite so visible, or, you know, hidden from view to a certain extent, but that's still, I think, encroaching on the open land. There's infill land in Boulder City that could maybe more wisely be used to comply with the fact that our strategic plan says we value our open land. So maybe some consideration for another location that might infill could better comply with what, you know, we value in our strategic plan and as Boulder City, our open lands. And then my first comment on that use. And I will, again, reiterate my agreement with the concerns from the golf course staff, utility, and airport staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard on an agenda item at this moment?
Can anybody speak at this time?
Yes, there's someone coming up, though, I believe. No?
Yeah, I didn't know if I had any other person.
No.
She just dropped off a sheet, so if anybody coming up could please sign their name.
Oh, okay. That's right, we don't do cursive anymore in this country. Okay. Be happy to sign my name in just a second. So my name is Pam Noonan, and I am a resident of Boulder City. I more specifically live in Gingerwood. The last time I stood here, I voiced my objections to the grocery store. Now I've got them written down. My statement then was a reaction to the news. This time, I'm more prepared to be more proactive. I realize a great deal of time, energy, planning, maybe years, according to the asphalt and concrete blueprint that's on the land right now, indicates that this has been in the works. Longer than I've been a resident of Boulder City, granted. Regardless, I am a resident now, and I have been a resident of southern Nevada for over 40 years. You, and when I say you, I talk to everyone that's sitting behind a wall here, have been entrusted by the residents of Boulder City with a great deal of responsibility and power. I used to tell my daughter, everyone has power, and they all have their own superpower. Today, yours is to protect Boulder City, its residents, and its future. Further, I told her, you have a choice: to use your power for evil or good. Always choose good. If you have a question, consider, are you the only one benefiting from this action? Or is it truly in the best interest of everyone involved? If you are the only one, or your group is the only one, then perhaps you're not working with good. I'm asking you to choose good. You are the... You, council, who benefit from... You, the council, please think. Who is really benefiting from these developments? Is it really needed? Is this in the overall benefit of all of our community? Personally, from my perspective, and doing the research and reading since the previous meeting I was here and the current meeting, I say no. This is not in our community's best interest. For years, I worked as the Regional Director for the American Lung Association. I know the health risks in this area when we turn up ground dust and we make it airborne. Valley fever is real. It still exists. It's still very harmful. And the area you want to turn over is right next to one of the most vulnerable populations in our town. I spent a good deal of time also as the National Marketing Director for a large national development company. I've sat on a lot of planning meetings with a lot of cities around the country. I know you've put effort into this. I know you believe that this is in the best interest of the community for whatever the reasons the original presenters gave you, and for what you have read and bought into along the way. I'm sure that some of these things were started years and years and years ago. I know the time and the money and the effort. I also understand the amount of water that's going to be used merely in the development of these projects, and we can minimize that all we want. And 20 years ago, that was nothing. 20 years ago, we had more to play with. Not only is drought affecting us, the percentage of water that we're being allotted is dropping. We have continually overused per capita, our water usage compared to others. So minor construction water to retain and maintain the dust, the ambient dust, seems like nothing, but it's something now. It's somebody's hair wash. It's somebody's dishes. It's somebody's spaghetti meal. It is something. And to disregard it, the way we have disregarded our water for the... is irresponsible. You are not sitting here today to make a decision on a couple of plots of land and a couple of projects that may or may not benefit us with tourism dollars. You're sitting here today to decide... I'm almost done. You are sitting here today to decide how long the city will survive. And the more you put into it, the less it has to go. So these seemingly smallish, apparently benign projects in a relatively small, underused area of a small town seems insignificant on the grand scale, and yet you are entrusted to look beyond that. Stop these projects now for the best interest of our city, our county, our state, and as ridiculous as it sounds, our country. What we do here today does have an impact on the river, and the river has an impact on so many more than just us. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Would anyone else wish to be... I'm sorry. Right, right. Would anyone else wish to be heard at this moment? And I would remind anyone throughout any of the public comment periods that there's a five-minute limit per speaker, per item. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Jerry Smoke. I am a resident of Boulder City. I live in Gingerwood. And I just want to make it nice, simple, clear. Is this some kind of project that Boulder City really needs? The impact that it's going to have on our city for people, automobiles, the noise level? I live right over there where they're going to build this big wall. So that's going to take away all my view of the mountains and all. I don't want to have none of that when they put this in. So I'm just asking a simple question. Is this what this town needs? I don't think it is. I'm not for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing... Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm Anna Crown, and I'm a resident of Gingerwood. And, you know, it's like the rats, the hours, and we're retired. And I moved here about four years ago, and I wanted to stay, you know, just like a nice, quiet town. And it's ruining the view of the mountains, and I don't agree with it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could you remind everybody to please sign in?
Sure. Sign in before you speak.
My name is Brian Burns. I'm a new resident of Boulder City for about a year and a half. I live in Gingerwood. I agree that... I don't know the town well enough yet to make that determination, what we need or what we don't, but I work in government. I work for former Congressman John Porter, doing research, legislative research. With an empty store sitting uptown, right in the middle of town, I don't know why this would make sense for this. Also, my concern is a big box store might move in and use that zoning to take that area over, which isn't optimal. So I'm in opposition of it, but two things I would like to bring up. Air quality is an issue. We've got dirt bikes running through Gingerwood, through the back of Gingerwood, that don't have license plates, that are using our area back there behind us to cut through to the desert. We're wasting police time dealing with that because we're calling... Everybody that lives here is calling them. We're all calling them. 6:30 in the morning on a Sunday, these kids are running through there. I've almost been run over twice. I just was out... The reason I'm late was talking to a police officer that's been helping me with that. Also, I think, you know, even a sign up there that says, "No dirt bike riding within 1,000 yards," which is city law, is what I'm to understand. So some signage would help, and even just some chain link fence to cut that access off to keep people from going back there. I know it's a desert tortoise area too. Lastly, this is more of an aesthetic issue, but the Republican Ladies Monument at the corner of Adams and Gingerwood, or Veterans and Adams, I'm sorry. It's a beautiful monument, but at the last minute, somebody took a street light and turned it this way to illuminate the entire thing.
Excuse me?
So it's using the yellow sodium light, which is horrible, on our flag, number one. Two, if you sit at Gingerwood and look that direction, it's like looking at the Great Eye of Sauron from the Lord of the Rings movies. Absolutely awful.
Let's stay on the topic, though. Thank you.
But that area back there needs some maintenance, and fencing would be a great deal, or some signage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. So, all right. And remember, we will have an opportunity to speak on this matter when the matter comes up within the agenda as well.
My name is Sharon Gregory, and I live in Gingerwood. And when I first heard about the grocery store, potential grocery store coming, my concern was, is this going to be a neighborhood Walmart? That was uppermost in my mind, because they like to put their stores anywhere from five to six miles apart and get those populations. So I did some research on what happens when a Walmart comes to town. And one of the things that happens, it kills small businesses. It's something that they're known for. I'm against it. Nobody is saying what type of grocery store. We have other stores that are close. We have a Smith's. We have Albertson's, but we have a Walmart already down the road. Why do we need another grocery store? Not only that, there's talk of a strip mall coming. When you have businesses like a strip mall or a grocery store, you're going to have you're going to have trucks coming in and delivering goods, all hours, idling trucks. Not only is it going to bring rats, that just comes with a grocery store, but the main concern should be, we live in Gingerwood. We moved to Gingerwood because we want our nice peace and quiet environment. It'll be disrupted for us. I get it, other Boulder City residents may not care about that, because we're just a small area of Boulder City. But whenever you build a store and you have residents living in back of the store, that brings down home values. It's documented. You could do the research. But while there are some positives for other businesses, small businesses are going to suffer. And that should be noted. And Walmart, I hope it's not a neighborhood Walmart store. Just look it up, and you'll see what happens when Walmart comes to town. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Phipps. I live in Gingerwood as well. And just a couple of points that I mentioned at the last meeting that I was at here. Number one, in reference to the grocery store, 99% of our population is that way from the grocery store. Now, I know it's coming in because of this new development, but it doesn't do the rest of Boulder City any good to put a grocery store or a shopping center on this end of town. It needs to be up the other side of town. The other, besides all of the rats and everything else that everybody's talking about, the other item that I would be most concerned with is water usage. We're already getting to critical... We're already at a critical stage in our water usage, and Boulder City uses more than anybody else in the county. So that's probably the biggest thing that I think should be considered before anything else goes on here. Thank you.
I wasn't going to do this, but I will, because my friend told me she would ask me about it later. But, you know, I was kind of wondering, like, there's a 55 mile an hour speed zone.
Excuse me. Oh, could you state your name for the record, please?
I don't have one. No, I'm sorry. Diana Beebe.
Thank you, Diana.
And I live in Gingerwood as well. But I just, I'm wondering, how is anyone going to get to that grocery store over there when they're over here doing 55 miles an hour? Are they going to slam on their brakes and turn right like crazy, or what? That's my concern, besides the nasty stuff that comes with a grocery store. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Sanders. Stop me if you've heard this before. I live in Gingerwood. The next person's shorter, I'm sure. So my name is Bob Sanders. I also live in Gingerwood. When I got this notice in the mail, I thought this was the silliest thing I've heard since I lived in Pleasanton, California. You want to build a mall-type thing that borders a senior community? I commute every day to Vegas. I also know Veterans Memorial Road and Adams. Where are you going to put all the traffic? How are you going to get the traffic coming in to make left turns or U-turns? My problem is air quality. We just had the jokers put up those sun reflectors for Los Angeles. They got a nothing fine to bring up dust, and this won't bring up dust. I am totally opposed. There's nothing about traffic, traffic control, or anything next to a retirement community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Don Sanuskar. S-A-N-U-S-K-A-R. We haven't addressed the issue of personal safety with the grocery store and possible or probable strip mall. With those businesses abutting right up to the side of Gingerwood, and I'm sorry, I am a Gingerwood resident, we have a population of youngsters. I was a teacher for 35 years. I understand the nature of the young. And as the gentleman right before me said, we have a congestion problem with traffic that needs to be investigated by the council and other that needs to be investigated by the council and other agencies that are responsible for traffic control. There's a median on veteran. I don't know how people are going to cross the street to get to the proposed businesses or how they're going to get out or what they're going to do when they realized they've made a wrong turn. It's bad enough that veteran narrows once you pass the signal. Lord help us. And Gingerwood is quiet. It's extraordinarily well-maintained. It's friendly. And personally, I want to see that intruders are not invited to disturb our neighborhood. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
I think you recognized me for the last meeting. My name is, my name is Sandra Terbury. I lowered that a bit. And I also live at Gingerwood. And no, this is wrong, what you're doing. I loved Boulder City. I moved here 11 years ago. Very happy to be here. And I like a quiet town. It's not going to be quiet anymore. You, you go ahead with what you want to do and we're going to have all kinds of crazies coming into this town, more drugs flowing through. You have no idea what you're doing. I think you're totally going to destroy Boulder City. I really believe that with all my heart. I think if you go through with this, you will be destroying Boulder City. It will not be the great, nice town it was before. You don't know what kind of people could be drawn here. You know, there's gangs, there's different things, especially with the open border. We've got all kinds of problems. It's going to get worse. They see new stores opening, oh, let's go there. They see this opening, that, let's go there. You know, I don't think it's funny and I don't think it's right. I think it's wrong. And yes, about the rats and the infesting of the vermin, vermin, you know, that could come through to our homes, maybe fires, who knows what's going to happen? And the dust, I agree with them 100% because I have bad allergies to begin with and I don't think this is a very good idea whatsoever. And I think this just should be kiboshed. And that's my opinion. Maybe it's not your opinion, but it is my opinion. So, and I'm going to darn well give it. And if they do, does go through, I really will, like I told you last time, I will move. I don't want to live in a town that I loved for so long and move to. And now it's going to be destroyed. This is not the place that I dreamed before of living. I, I can see it turning into a hellhole. And think about the water. You know, I, I was down the lake not long ago, twice in the last four weeks. And it's sad. It's very sad. And when you start having brownouts and blackouts, then you'll know. You'll say, oh, we made a big mistake. We just, just destroyed Boulder City. And I want to thank you for my time.
Hi, my name is Iris Corley, previous owner of Gingerwood Mobile Home Park. I'm not understanding why there has to be a shopping center that backs up to the park. You're going to have spotlights on that whole row back there. I know there's a storage area that's a breaker there, but you're going to have trucks beeping and going all time of night and day. I think that's the main concern. Plus, I agree about the water. Going to really have to keep that dust down while you're building. And right now, we're really short on water and they're cutting back. So I just don't know why we would want a bunch of delivery trucks coming in and out all day and night. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Hahn. I've lived in Gingerwood for 16 years. Boulder City owns how many thousands of square miles of land? And they have to put a, a strip mall and a, a medium sized grocery store abut to a senior community? That's crazy.
Hi, my name is Denise Quadralling and I did not come to the last meeting because when I looked at the proposed thing, it said you're only planning on building at the top corner, which really, I didn't think it would affect much of Gingerwood. I happen to live at the end of Fleetwood Street, almost to the back fence. Now you're proposing to build all the way down to the corner. The people in Gingerwood are all retired. We don't want to hear noise. We don't want to hear dust and we don't want to worry about people climbing over the fence and coming into our community and worried about safety. I mean, everyone is a senior over 55 years old and our safety is about utmost concern to people. And we should not have to live through the building of it. I mean, most of us, you know, how, how old we are, we're going to have to live however many years of the noise of building it. And then, as people mentioned, the noise of trucks and in and out and worried about the safety. Like I said, my house is two houses before the gate. I would be feel, not feel safe. I feel very safe in living there now and I would not feel safe. There's no reason, and someone mentioned about small businesses. You're going to put a mall there and it's going to take, is going to take away from all the small businesses in town. So I, I think there's a lot to consider before making a decision on this. And I appreciate your time and everybody's comments. Thank you.
So seeing no others ready to speak at this moment, let's turn it over to those who are watching the meeting remotely. Those interested in calling in and making comment at this time, please call in at 702-589-9629. Hearing no calls, we'll close this initial public comment period and move on to the action portion of the agenda. So the first-
Mr. Chairman, I have a public comment to read.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
This public comment was submitted by Lois Denott. We'll take the phone call first. Public comment?
Yes, I'm calling in about the shopping center rolling in behind Gingerwood.
Okay. State your name for the record, please.
Susan Mansfield.
Hearing no calls, we'll close this initial public comment period.
Would you mind turning down the noise in the background?
Okay, okay, okay. It's down.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I don't have a comment except I've been listening to what other people have been saying and it looks, it sounds like something I absolutely do not want. So I would say, no, I don't think it's a good idea at all. I live on Fleetwood.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I hang up?
If you're done with your public comments, yes.
I'm done with my public comment.
All right, thank you for calling.
Bye-bye. Bye.
Public comment?
Yeah, I'm calling about the meeting today.
Okay, can you state your name for the record, please?
David Baumann.
Okay, go ahead.
And I live at Gingerwood. And I just about agree with everybody's thing that they're saying out there that we don't Because of the noise, the hoodlums, everything that could happen, no. We don't need that. We're, we're retired.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Ms. White.
Can you state your name for the record?
Carla Dussey.
Thank you. You go ahead with your comments.
I'd just say no. You said everything, except one more concern. We moved here a year and a half ago and I was reading online something about asbestos in the air in Boulder City. I had no idea. Do you know if that's still a thing?
This part's, this part's limited to public comments, so nobody can respond.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's just the concern with dirt coming up, I thought of that. I still say no.
Thank you for your comments.
You're quite welcome. Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
So I think that ends the public comment period. And Madam Clerk, did you have a comment that had been written in?
I have a public comment. This written public comment was submitted by Lois Denott. This grocery store shopping mall will obstruct the view of people owning mobile homes facing west along the west fence of the Gingerwood Senior Mobile Home Park. We hope that if they do build this grocery store mall, that there will at least be one gate from the grocery store to the gate at the Gingerwood Senior Mobile Home Park so that the senior citizens who would like to walk to the grocery store won't have to walk around a tall cement brick wall to get to the grocery store. Also, it would be nice if security cameras were put up at this grocery store mall and between the grocery store mall and the Gingerwood Senior Mobile Home Park for the safety of the people going to this grocery store mall. Also, we hope the grocery store and other stores are not high-end stores, that people are vacationing, live here, or on low income budgets can't afford to shop at all. Lois Denott, owner of a mobile home in Gingerwood Senior Mobile Home Park, Boulder City, Nevada. But yes. One more written comment from Red Mobile Home Park. We were unable to attend tonight's meeting due to my husband's health issues. I am his sole caregiver. I just want it to be recorded that we are against having a store so close to the park for several reasons. One, this is our forever ever home. It took us many years to get here and we are here for the simple life with the beauty. The mountain vistas, the clean skies, I can't speak for others, but I believe that it is why a majority of people love Gingerwood Mobile Home Park. Good people, simple life, who do not take what is around us for granted. Two, with tractor trailers, especially ones that are reefers, that are either delivering or ones who are waiting to unload idle day and night. Three, the outdoor lighting that has to be on almost 24/7. And the more recent issue of water, the more recent issue of water Boulder City was built for the workers of the dam. The understanding Boulder City would always have water, even with everybody conserving down the line where it's still in jeopardy. The excess waste, other going in the septic. This is recycled. When there is certain contaminants, even the best filters cannot remove some of the smallest particles. There is a host of other smaller reasons not to have a store. The only thing that a store of close proximity would benefit is convenience and convenience is not something Gingerwood needs for most part. Everyone in Gingerwood takes care of each other and there are other locations. Thanks for your time.
I assume that that's the end of comments during this initial period. That being stated, let's close this initial public comment period. We'll move on to agenda item for possible action and bring it back to the commission. Approval of the minutes of the July 6th, 2022 regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Favor of approval? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And all in favor, no opposed. Move on, moving on to the second item for possible action. This is a conditional use permit, CU 22-275. George Patrick Rogers, 1400 Wyoming Street, Suite 3. This will be a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit in the general commercial zone for a veterinary clinic pursuant to city COVID staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noted, this is a request for a conditional use permit for a veterinary clinic in the downtown commercial area. It is referred to as Dr. Sally Vet Veterinary Holistic Center and the applicant provided information and details as to how the business would be run. Of note is that actually they are proposing only, they have rather limited daytime business hours and there will be no overnight, you know, boarding or keeping of any oversight. So in that aspect, it will be similar to the pet supply boutique that is right next door where they would have animals coming and going during daytime hours. And as the staff report notes, historically, there have been other pet-related uses in that particular part of downtown, including for many years, a full-service veterinary clinic just down the street. So the staff report analyzes a number of land use related factors for the conditional use permit. From our research, we could find that none of the other pet-related businesses in the area have ever had complaints. And if the commission is in favor of approving the request, there is an attached motion which does list several conditions that would need to be complied with. In alternative, alternatively, the commission could deny the request if it provides findings based on the code criteria. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan. Does anyone else on the commission have questions for Susan? If the applicant's here and would like to be heard on this matter, if you have anything to add, please feel free to stand up and tell us a little bit more.
Thank you, commission. My name is George Patrick Rogers. I'm the applicant, along with my wife, Dr. Lane, who is busy with a sick animal, as often happens to us. We, thank you, by the way, that was a good description. We operate- We operate more as a specialty practice. We don't have surgical anesthesia. As she mentioned, there's no overnight kennel-ing, daycare, that sort of thing. So we're pretty much a one-on-one, similar to a naturopath would be in the human field, medical field. And so our cases tend to be referral, whether that is from another veterinarian or perhaps self-referral as well. So it's a limited services type of limited scope, although it is integrated. So there's what you'd call alternative complementary medicine, which she has specialized in for many years, along with typical veterinary medicine, sans those other procedures. And we also do not have diagnostics, so there's no CT, MRI, x-ray, diagnostic ultrasound, those types of things. Yep?
Does anyone have questions of the applicant?
I have just a couple of questions. So it sounds like you've operated this sort of a business in the past?
Correct.
And, you know, one concern by many are the animal waste products, if there are some during their limited visits?
Sure.
If you could maybe explain?
Yeah, sure. No, that's a fair question. So, yeah, it does happen. We don't have a magical veterinary practice where that doesn't happen. So it's to be expected, and best to have protocols in place for that. It is a question that Susan did ask of me, but I don't think it made it into the packet in time. So liquid waste, we have protocols in place, i.e. a heavy-duty rag that's disposable. That goes on top of that, gets wiped up. We have a sanitary wipe that follows that. Then we also have a natural enzyme spray that we use that immediately neutralizes the odor. It also has some other effect, but those are all non-toxic materials. So we have those in place, as well as the standardized cleaning items that you might find. Mop, wipes, that sort of thing, paper towels, all that. But, yeah, it's best to plan for those sort of things. And solid waste is a similar thing, only we have another protocol for actually the pickup of that, which is a heavy-duty plastic bag. We also have a specific disposal bin that has a tight-seal top that we use to put that in, and then that is taken out either as needed, right on the spot, or at least by the end of the day and every day. Yeah. And the reason that we're very prudent about those types of protocols is not only for our neighbors, but also for anybody else that's coming in. If you have another animal coming in, post that visit, then you want to be able to have a clean space for them to see.
Very good. Question?
Hi, when you said that you were going to empty that daily, empty where?
Oh, that goes into the, they will go into a sealed bag, trash bag, heavy-duty trash bag, and then that goes into the trash area, which is locked up on the outside of the building.
I think, thank you. One last question for me. Do you anticipate having more, say, than one animal in the practice at a time? Or, and if so, how do you kind of keep animals separated?
Sure. There is space in reception to keep them apart, as it were. But, no, we, our appointments are about an hour, and we try not to overlap. So the appointments generally last anywhere from half an hour to 45 minutes because they are specialized. So we also allow another 15 minutes in between there. So hopefully, we don't get a lot of cross-traffic. And the reason it is that way, it's not a high-volume practice. It's very specialized, and so there's a great deal of attention that goes into each visit. And therefore, doctor's notes are quite lengthy and quite detailed. And so we try to allow for some minutes for her to put in proper notes.
Interesting, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, commission. Is there anything else I need to do from here?
No, I don't think so. I think we'll be proceeding.
Just wait until we get through the public hearing and they make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Right. This is a public hearing, and those wishing to be heard on this subject alone, step forward and state your name for the record. Seeing none, let's move to the virtual audience. And if anyone has comments on this particular agenda item, please please call in to 702-589-9629. Thank you. And again, we'll 45-second delay. Hearing, no comments. We'll bring the public comment period to a close, public hearing to a close, and move it back to the planning commission for deliberation and motion.
I would make a motion, please. I move to approve Resolution Number 1216, which includes findings and conditions for approval of CU 22-275.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any, anyone here on the dais have any comments? Seeing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None? All in favor? Thank you very much. Excuse me while I organize my notes. Next action, next item for action is AM 22385. It's applicant John Gustafson at 920 Via Grande Way. It's a public hearing and a recommendation to city council on a proposed amendment to the zoning map to rezone the subject property from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R110, Single Family Residential. And staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff considers this a somewhat procedural matter as this actual request has been a long time coming. As you can see from the zoning exhibit map, which, if Holly could put that on the screen for the audience, there is precisely one lot still left in the Lake Mead View Estates area that has a commercial zoning. And that's because decades ago, back to sometime in the 70s, it was part of a larger parcel at the entry to that subdivision, and that larger parcel was all zoned commercial. Apparently, back then, they assumed there might be a small commercial development there. That never happened, and the adjacent properties were eventually developed with homes that did end up getting their zoning changed to R1-10 to match the area. The owner of this property at the time did not wish to participate in that rezoning. The property is since sold. The owner, new owner, is planning to build a home, and under our current regulations, they do need to get the property rezoned to single-family. So this is a recommendation to the city council, and once they act on it and it's approved, the zoning there will match for the rest of the neighborhood. There will be no more commercial zoning in this particular area, and the applicant will be able to move forward with his home. And in addition to that, I have to note one other item that was placed on the dais for you. State law has a rather unusual requirement when a proposed rezoning is actually for a use that is less intense than the current zoning. And in that case, staff has to put a statement at the bottom of the public hearing notice that citizens have the option of turning in, indicating whether or not they are in favor of or opposed to that particular, what we call a downzoning request. So we've received half a dozen of those comments. You've got them before you, and basically, five were in favor and one was opposed. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of staff? All right. Is...
I'm not sure if the applicant would be present. I told him it wasn't required if he could not make it, but you could ask.
Is the applicant present, and if so, would he or she wish to be heard on this matter? He looks like not. This is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience would wish to be heard on this matter, please step forward and state your name. Seeing no comments, we'll move to the virtual audience. If you in the virtual audience have any comments to this agenda item, please dial in at 702-589-9629. We'll give 45 seconds. Hearing, no comments. We'll close the public hearing portion of this agenda item and move it back to the commission for deliberation and a possible motion. Anyone have any comments? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, move to approve Resolution 1217, which includes finding for a recommendation in favor of AM 22-358.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Seeing none, bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, opposed? No opposed. And the item is approved. Moving forward to agenda item number four. This is MPA 22-045, City Boulder City, for Mark and Anell Wells at 383 Clermont Street. And this is matters pertaining to modifying the master plan, future land use map, relative to prior purchase of adjacent lands. And could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the staff report, my explanation of this request is going to satisfy the NRS requirements for the city holding a neighborhood meeting on this matter as the requirements for a master plan are slightly different than they are for other items under state law. For this request, staff also considers this somewhat of a procedural matter. Yes, thank you, Holly, for putting that up on the screen. At 383 Clermont, there are two tracts of land that have been added to or are in the process of being added to that particular lot. Several years ago, the prior owner of 383 Clermont purchased a small piece of land so that that could become a separate buildable lot, and that was known as Tract 314. More recently, the new owners of that property planned to build a home, and they wanted more land. And since the city owns the adjacent land, they got permission from the city to purchase another tract of land, and on the map, that's referred to as Tract 355. Both of those tracts already have the correct zoning. That particular area is all zoned R1-15 for single-family residential. However, the master plan future land use map does not have that same designation for the adjacent city land. And so that's what this request is for, is to change the master plan designation from open lands to single-family for the portions of land and the adjacent potential future right-of-way that have been or are being added to 383 Clermont. And that is a standard procedure that when the city is selling land to somebody for this type of lot combination purpose, we require that they follow through with paying for the applications to make sure that the zoning and master plan designations conform. In this case, the zoning conforms, and the city is acting as the applicant on behalf of the owners who did pay the required application fee. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, also to explain, you don't have to worry about the multiple resolutions that... Um, okay, multiple resolutions that are in the packet. State law has some very particular requirements with regard to master plan recommendations. And so whichever way the planning commission chooses to vote, we'll make sure that the chairman signs the correct resolution.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions of staff? All right, and since the city is the applicant, I know we're here, I know you're here, and we've had the opportunity to ask questions. This is a public hearing. Any who would like to be heard on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mark Wells, and I am the owner, my wife and I, who's also in the back, the owner of 383 Clermont Street. We just want to say that we really appreciate what the city staff has done to get us to this point. We are new to Boulder City. We look forward to retiring here. Beautiful community. And the city has really done a good job to help us get to this point. So I'm here to answer any questions as well, if there are any. Should I sign in or not? Yes?
Okay, so, is it just those leaving a comment?
All right, okay.
Does anyone on the commission have a question for the applicant? Thank you very much. And so this is the public comment period of this agenda item.
My name is Vic Pochas. I currently live at 383 Clermont. I was the previous, one of the previous owners of three... I live at 380, I'm sorry, one of the previous owners of 383 Clermont. I have no issues or problems. We were thinking of doing the same thing at one point in time. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, we'll move to the virtual audience. If anyone in the streaming world has a comment, please dial in to 702-589-9629. And we'll have a 45-second delay. All right, hearing no comments, we'll close the public comment period of this agenda item and move it back to the commission for deliberation and a possible motion. Do we have any comments and thoughts on this matter? Hearing, hearing none. I'll make a motion. I would move to approve resolution 1218 with the findings for recommendation in favor of MPA 22-045.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Bring it to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this brings us to agenda item number five, Master Plan Amendment 22-043, City of Boulder City. And this is matters pertaining to modifying the master plan future land use for a proposed RV park and cabin rental use. And Michael, city staff report.
Good evening, Chairman Matouska and members of the Planning Commission. Michael Maje, the development director for the city. The property in question for your consideration tonight is approximately 74 acres, located west of the intersection of Adams Boulevard and Veterans Memorial Drive. This is familiar to you because it was before you earlier this year for consideration for addition to the land management process, which is the first step for any city-owned property to be considered for the sale or lease of city-owned land. The city council did approve adding this property to the land management process. The next step in the process of consideration of the disposition of this land is through this step in consideration of amendment to the master plan. I do want to emphasize that while this is the next step in the process, it's not the final step. I'll go into greater detail regarding that. There will be additional opportunities for the public and the planning commission to weigh in on this project. Also, while there is a very specific proposal which initiated the consideration of this land use and this proposed development, which is the proposed Elite RV development proposal, what you're considering tonight is not a specific proposal. What you're considering is an amendment to the master plan land use designation. And really, for the benefit of the public, our master plan is a guiding document that helps to determine potential future uses within the community. Obviously, there are other considerations that have to be looked at, and specifically, when you're looking at specific proposals, that's when you get into the greater details. So what you're going to be looking at is whether it's appropriate to redesignate this land from open lands and parks and recreational to community commercial. Community commercial land use designation allows for commercial development, retail development. On the screen and also in your packet is a map, and this is how we show both the Planning Commission and the community what the proposed change is. So you can see at the top of the map, you have outlined in red the subject property, which is the 74 acres. It also shows the current master plan land use designations. As I already noted, parks and recreation as well as open lands. The bottom map shows the proposed change, and so in this case, this would be proposing the land use designations to be changed to commercial uses. As you consider the proposed land use consideration, you're going to be looking at a couple of different factors, including surrounding land use designations. Is there the infrastructure to support the development? And when we brought this before the planning commission previously, we had worked with city staff to determine that there is infrastructure to support this type of development at this location and the appropriateness of the use. As I mentioned earlier, this is not the final step in consideration of the disposition of city-owned land. With the master plan land use consideration, if that moves forward, the next step in the process, and in this case, with proposed lease, would be for the city to engage in negotiations for the potential lease of this property. In addition to that, the zoning for the subject property is not appropriate for the use. And so there would be a separate process and public hearing process, just as you heard earlier tonight with another proposal, where it would come back before you, and at that point, you would have more specific details to evaluate the appropriateness of rezoning the land for the specific use. Now, having said that, we do have the representatives of Elite RV in the audience, and they can answer any additional questions you have. We did include in the packet their prior presentation to refamiliarize you with the proposed use. And you have before you consideration of resolution 1219 regarding the proposed change in land use designation within our master plan. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Does anyone on the commission have questions for city staff? I have, I have a question, Michael. So at this point, we're really voting on whether or deliberating and voting on whether or not commercial is a reasonable land use designation for these parcels of land.
Correct.
Without regard to what the kind of the future disposition of those might be. I mean, we know what precipitated the request. Still the opportunity for the city to sell rather than lease the land? Or has that been determined?
So in order for the city to sell anything larger than an acre, it requires a vote of the people and a ballot question. And so that has not been proposed for this site. So this would continue to be city-owned land under a lease arrangement.
Very good. So we've maintained control.
Yes.
All right.
Chairman, I do have a question, please.
Very good.
Michael, I have heard, first of all, I love the project, and I think it's an appropriate land use. But just to address some concerns, I've heard some sentiments about the cabins operating like Airbnbs, that people would use them as Airbnbs, which is currently against our zoning code. How do you respond to that?
They would be like a hotel or motel, and that's how they would be managed and arranged. So Airbnbs are with...
Private owners.
Exactly.
Exactly. That's what I figured.
All right. Any other questions for city staff?
So again, Elite RV is here to answer questions that you might have, and then, of course, the public hearing component.
Would the representative of Elite RVs like to step forward to answer questions? I don't think we're going to go through a presentation tonight, but if someone on the dais has questions...
I just want to introduce myself, and thank you very much. I'm Gary Baldwin, the chief executive officer for Elite. We're excited about our project, of course, and want to thank the city and particularly Michael and his staff for the welcoming and the wonderful input that we've gotten in the direction. Thank you very much.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Mr. Baldwin, I apologize, I'm new on the planning commission, so I missed the presentation. But have, do you have a history of ever building one of these parks?
Not specifically a park, but I have about 40 years of experience in the hotel casino business in Las Vegas Strip, and we have done some major developments on that particular up and down the strip. So we have quite a team. We have architectural on staff, social media group on staff, engineering on staff will do, it'd be almost like you're running a mini hotel. I mean, you've got an HR person, you've got a chief of security, you've got a maintenance person, you've got all those type of elements that you have in a hotel casino. And I'm not trying to be braggadocious, but I ran the largest, one of the largest hotels on this trip, 3,000 rooms and 3,000 employees and 27 department heads. So I'm a worker, so I want to do a great job. And we call it Elite from the standpoint, we want to make it really, really something that the City of Boulder City can be extremely proud of, and I feel comfortable we'll get that done.
And just one more thing, have you ever built any type of development next to a golf course?
No, not specifically to a golf course, but I do know that Gary Guy Wilson is a very reputable architect, and he has currently been retained. And so he and his staff has people that have done that. And we'll reach out for the best landscaping input, et cetera, et cetera. So we have the best of breed, I can assure you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one, one question. I know in your presentation that you talked a little bit about water use.
Yes, we do.
Would you remind us kind of what the potential water use is and compare that to...
Can I, can I bring up my associate, my partner?
Sure.
Because he's the one on, in the presentation, he's the one that basically spearheaded that presentation, and we do, can we show that, those water slides, by any chance, Michael?
Unfortunately, we don't have that slide.
We have them in our packet.
Yeah, we do have them in our packet.
Okay, okay. This is Frank Manzullo, and he's the one who really put that together along with our engineers. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, we, thank you very much for the opportunity and welcome to the commission. It's, it is definitely an interesting, exciting process that we're going through here. Thank you. Perfect. And there are specific items that we addressed in the presentation that we gave much thought to and talked to the community about, water and electricity being two big ones. For the water consumption, if you know, in the, in the presentation, there's actually a water use comparison, which just basically states that if we were to put single-family housing, a single-family housing unit versus what we're looking at, we're less than half the water consumption. And obviously, a home is occupied 100% of the time, whereas this would be occupied by maybe 60, 70% of the time. So again, we're using about a third of the water that a, that a home would use on a similar-sized site. Additionally, we looked at what the entirety of the water consumption would be, and we know that it's, it's compared to the, to turn phrase, drop in a bucket, but we're less than half of 1% of an increase to the water's annual usage, is what we're looking at. That being said, we also want to be good stewards of the land, good stewards, because we know what the lake is doing. We've also been working with the, with the... Yes, the Water District, yes, thank you. And actually met with them, the woman that prepared the report for the group here, we were able to hook up with her and actually go through and get a better understanding for really what is going on. And we know that it's, there's changes around us, long-term climate change, things like that, that is very obvious to us. It's in our backyard. With her guidance, we were made very, very comfortable with this project, knowing especially as Las Vegas expands, how much they're taking on any given day of the week, and looking at this project, again, a very minuscule project compared to what's going on out there.
Paul, excuse me, I just want to say that I'm with the Southern Nevada Water Authority. The lady who made the presentation, we had our engineers contact the Southern Nevada Water Authority, and we've set up some meetings, and they, you know, we've totally explained to them our project and our concerns about the water usage, and we will not only comply with what they're suggesting, I think we'll exceed, you know, their concerns. Once again, because of the technology of constant metering every situation, every site there, so we wanted to just be, and I guess what I'm trying to say, and why I'm standing here, is the fact, I just wanted you to know that we're very, very proactive regarding that.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll open the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward and state your name.
I'm back. I'm Pam Noonan, and originally, I was, again, with my reactionary thought, I was like, oh, yeah, that's great. But after looking into the water, one of the questions that I have, and it's more here because they're going to have the answers, what happens in five years if our water continues to go in...
Pam?
What happens in five years if our water continues to go in the direction it's going in? Or 10 years? And we don't have those resources available to keep that area lovely and elegant and attracting people who want to have all the joys of the lake and the water and the greenery and the finery, and we just don't have that. How are we, how are you going to sustain that so we don't end up with another, not literally, but another grocery store in the middle of town that's been essentially abandoned? So for our long-term, long-range planning, looking at, this is, right now, I'm concerned with right now's water and right now's air, but it doesn't stop there. It continues. And so those are my questions. What is the long-range plan to ensure that this will be able to be maintained as an elite community, attracting people, and under utilizing the resources that we have available to ensure their longevity?
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Susan Davis, and I've lived here since 1985. I don't think we need any more of these projects. The lake used to be full, everything was beautiful. Now we're building homes on the way down to the lake, those big mansions, they took water. You're putting in storybook, they're taking water, they put in the cottages, they're taking water. What happened to clean, green Boulder City? It's crazy. I've seen it... I've seen it go down, and my kids grew up here, my grandkids live here in town. Where's the water going to be? Nowhere. We're not going to have it. They can't explain that to me. More building? There wasn't supposed to be building. We moved here because there was a grandfather clause that they couldn't build these things. And now you're allowing them to build them. It's not fair. It's not fair to the people who've been here for years.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, let's move to the virtual audience. If you have comments on this agenda item, please call into 702-589-9629. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, please.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Hello?
Hello, can you state your name for the record, please?
Ron Henderson.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment on this proposal, RV Park, and I totally agree with the last person that made a comment on this. We have lost our control on our city, and we need to keep this a small town like it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's me.
Madam Clerk, is that speaker off, offline now?
It is.
Oh, okay. We'll just wait another couple of moments, in case someone else calls in. Hearing no more calls, we'll end the public comment period of this agenda item, and move it back to the planning commission for consideration. I'd like to hear what our thoughts are.
Mr. Chairman, I got a few thoughts. And as far as the project itself, I love the concept, huge fan of it, I could see a place for it in Boulder City. Looking at Boulder City as a whole within the Southern Nevada region, and where we are with water, I don't know the answer to this, but could the Southern Nevada Water Authority ever put restrictions on the city as a whole, as far as the amount of water that the city just pumps out into the desert?
Is that a question for staff?
Yes.
That would be a question for staff.
So you're referring to the affluent after we treat it?
Correct.
Yeah. So we're working with the Southern Nevada Water Authority right now, looking at two options of how to address the treated affluent. Currently, approximately 60% of it is sold for dust control projects within the region, but the other 40% is not. And so the city's goal is to either upgrade the treatment plant so that the treated affluent can be used to irrigate parks and golf courses within Boulder City, or to work with the Southern Nevada Water Authority to build a line that would go back to the Henderson Treatment Plant, where the water would be further treated and put back into Lake Mead. So the commitment is to reuse 100% of that treated affluent one way or the other.
Okay. That is what I was hoping that we were going to end up getting to at a certain point, is that we could reuse our water the way that the Las Vegas Valley does. But obviously, when we're, when we're watering our golf courses, that water just gets evaporated, and we have a golf course to show for it. My personal opinion, that Boulder City has three golf courses within its geographical area for a population of 16,000 people is a bit excessive, when we have golf courses in Southern Nevada that have been closing rapidly, and communities are losing their property values there, as well as the golf course is shuttering. Black Mountain just closed, and they're going to put in a whole bunch of homes. That's a side subject, but Mike, I know that we don't have any debt service on Boulder Creek, so financially, it's viable to keep all these golf courses going. But is it the most ethical thing to do with the water usage? To me, those are two different things. And is this the best location for this type of project? And keep in mind, I'm in huge favor of the project itself, but if the golf course, if Boulder Creek, for whatever reason, goes away, I'm going to call it for ethical reasons, because of lack of water. Does this gentleman want his investment be in, basically on the outskirts of town, where the dead golf course surrounded him, which is why I was asking about the Southern Nevada Water Authority putting restrictions on the city for our total water usage? You have any?
So you're asking, would they further reduce the amount of water we receive?
Correct.
Yeah, we have, we have agreements with the Southern Nevada Water Authority regarding water allocation. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do know that our utility staff has been carefully monitoring how the water is used. We're currently have a multi-department effort looking at water conservation strategies throughout the community. The golf courses are working with the Southern Nevada Water Authority to reduce the amount of water used on the golf courses, conversion of unplayed areas into desert tolerant landscape. We're also looking at our parks, and also, long-term city compliance with the requirement that by 2026, all non-functioning turf will have to be removed. And so through the replacement of non-functioning turf, we will be able to save even more water.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good questions.
Well, I, I understand our role is to determine if this type of, I know it's not project-specific, but it's hard to not address the project when some of the comments being made are, you know, they might not think it's a great idea because of the water. So I think it is a very appropriate use. I'm in favor of it. I'm a camper, I've camped all over the country. I've been at high-end, I've been at lower-end, I've been dry camping, I've been everywhere. And I, I have never seen any, you know, negative consequences of a campground, especially a high-end one, to a community. The project's beautiful and well-thought-out. I think it would enhance what we, we have here. But just to address some of the comments made with, also, I'd like to say, I, there's some people in this room that might disagree with me, but I'm a golfer as well. And so I've golfed all over the valley, and I really respect our golf pro. He is very knowledgeable and professional, so I take his concerns very, very seriously. But the concerns about the security of the golf course and damage and liability are no different than houses around the golf course, and we already have that. I have a friend who lives on Hole Five, who people steal out of her cooler and her windows get broke, but the city isn't liable for that, because when you live on the golf course, you know that's what you're potentially signing up for. If you camp at a campground next to a golf course, that's what you're potentially signing up for. With respect to Mr. Walton's comments about residential occupancy, that's, this is so preliminary at this stage right now, that's something the city can address later on. This is not a place for people to live, it's a place for people to visit. And so with respect to the growth control ordinance, it has no bearing on it, in my opinion, tell me if I'm wrong, Michael.
Only from the standpoint that the cabins that are being proposed
Right.
would need to adhere to the growth control ordinance. Obviously, the RV park component, those are motor vehicles, those are not, they are not defined as residential dwelling units. And so they don't comply with the growth control ordinance.
Okay. Also, with respect to, with respect to the controlled growth and growth in general made by Ms. Davis, this project brings in visitors to Boulder City, and then they leave. So, and, you know, I think it is a great project that, that enhances what we have and brings people here, but it doesn't affect our quality of life. It doesn't affect, you know, people coming to our schools, it's, and it is a, we, we want to tout ourselves as outdoor recreation, and this is a campground. People are now giving up their homes and touring the country, working remotely to visit different places throughout the country. This is very preliminary. I, I would be disappointed if it got shot down already. I think it's an appropriate use. I think it's well-thought-out. I think it's a great team. I feel very fortunate that somebody with such great experience, who knows the area, has come to Boulder City to propose what I think is a wonderful idea. And I live right around the corner, so, I mean, I certainly have a dog in the fight personally, but I, I appreciate it, and I'm, I think it's great, and I'm totally in favor of it.
Beth, would you like to?
Yes, please, thank you. I'm a little torn on this one. I go back and forth, some of the stuff that Lauren said, I agree with. The other, the other thing that I keep getting stuck on, though, is, yes, there seems to be a really great project designated for that area, but we're being asked to take open land and zone it commercial, in the middle of a golf course. And nobody's said that yet, at all. I'm not in favor of it because of that reason. I think the project is wonderful. I think we have a responsibility, although the water usage discussion, you know, they're talking about the number of units and the water not, you know, taking up as much as residential, if we were to put houses around the golf course, but you couldn't put that number of houses around that golf course. So that argument, to me, didn't really hold the water. Come on. But I also think, you know, at some point, we have to take a stand on the water issue. And overall, I think where I'm stuck with this, and why I'm not going to vote in favor of this, is because you're asking us to take open lands and change it to commercial. And that's where I get hung up on the entire thing. Because when you look at what's allowed commercially, we can't look at this specific project. I've heard staff say that several times. Over the last couple of meetings, we've talked about this, and that's where I stand on it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bioski, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, I was about to see if we were in deliberations. Yes, and I'm probably, I'm going to raise some issues here for the commission members to consider, and largely, I, probably since I've been on the commission, I have brought this up at times, probably with not a lot of depth to it. But I think this is a very appropriate time to discuss what I'm going to bring forward, which is really largely a process issue, but it plays to what all the members of Gingerwood and the residents have said so far. And it specifically applies to our job here tonight, as stated in staff's proposal, which we are really being asked to adopt an amendment to the master plan that will basically put in place a future change that, once we adopt it here, the city council can't change it except to bring it back before us. And, and I'm going to ramble a little bit, but where I'm going in this whole process of a master plan, what we are failing to realize at this point, is we are looking at one and two parcels out of a very, very large area. And the primary area that's all in question is between the current city boundary, as it's been built out to, and what becomes I-11, all of that open land. So if I want to take Beth's point on open land, we really are making a major change here by adopting this and going from open land to commercial, without giving all citizens within all of Boulder City an opportunity to reevaluate the current master plan and address what do they want, all of that area that's not currently built out, it's all designated open land for the most part, and to see, what do we want to do? We need a bigger plan, to take piecemeal pieces of it, like this parcel and the other one, this before us tonight, are just two pieces out of all the land around it, okay? So what'll happen is, and what we're doing with this approach, is we're piecemealing it. And we're therefore, you know, kind of, we're expanding, but we're doing it piece by piece. What we're not doing is looking at the big picture and making a fundamental overall decision, how do you really want the whole thing to look in the end? Now, I say that, and it's an important point, because you have to involve the whole city. You can't just do it in individual meeting like now. So yes, we're following the master plan process, as defined by the state and defined by the regional board, we've had these discussions. But the point is, what we haven't done is done a major master plan update, which we are long overdue for. And this is a fallacy, that the city, and I'm sorry, and this is where I have a strong disagreement with city staff, we have not done a true master plan update for the city in what is coming down to probably 20 years. And any place within the country that does master plans according to state guidelines, they do that when typically every seven to 10 years, and beyond that, they do it when there's a major regional change or impact on the city. And we have had that with I-11. No one has paid attention to that. And what, and the reason I bring this whole process thing up is, if we were to do this correctly, right now, with these two parcels, we would be, as if we were doing as part of an overall master plan update, we would be doing workshops and involving all members of the community overall. And we'd be looking not just at this parcel, but we would be looking at the entire area around I-11, and all other infill and other areas around the city. around I-11 and all other infill and other areas around the city. Not so much infill because we are built out. So the issue becomes it's all the areas surrounding the built-out area. That's so why I'm doing this is I would like it on the record so that the city's council can think about, should we be entertaining doing a master plan update, a true master plan update, and not this piecemeal approach that we are doing? And by doing so, then we really would become and give all members of the city an opportunity to say, what do we want the city to look like? Now, I'm saying this with a little bit of tongue-in-cheek in the sense that I know most people say they don't want growth. But the reality is, update the plan and say that. Okay? Because if I was to vote on it right now, the plan, as it's stated, says it's an open use. Let's keep it at open use. Why should I even consider going beyond it to commercial? Because that's what the plan says. So I think I like the project. I mean, personally, I think it's wonderful. But that doesn't fit necessarily if we were to put other res because here's what happens. When you put a project like this in, all of a sudden, the next projects are going to come in, you know, 100 yards away, and it's going to say, well, I want some kind of residential. Well, this thing is close to residential. And so what happens is you just keep building on it. Okay? I said a lot, I wish I was there to better address it. I think I'm struggling with both of these things, and I just believe that we're not while we're following what the city land management plan says, I don't believe we're doing what the state really and what we should be doing as a city, and that's taking a bigger look at the whole the whole situation. So where I stand, I'm really kind of torn on it, but right now, it's open land. The master plan says it's open land. I think where the city wants to and everybody wants to follow the master plan, which I'm raising a question on, I'd say, got to leave it open land. That's my piece.
Thank you, Ernie.
Michael, I've got a
Mr. Chairman, I need to poke a hole in that argument because I don't agree with Chairman or Commissioner Bielski at all on that. The what he's proposing is that we can we're going to think that we have the best thoughts right here, right now, no matter what, and we're going to follow through. And you know what? Some ideas come down years down the line that make sense, and that's what this whole process is for. So nobody could have foreseen that Elite RV was going to come to the city and say, hey, I got this great idea, and here's where we're going to do this. So we have a process for this, and I think we're being effective. So.
Well, thank you. I asked for your thoughts, and I've heard some really terrific thoughts. And I'm just
Aaron, this is
Go ahead.
Obviously, may I speak? I don't jumping in, it's hard to tell if it's okay. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ernie.
Obviously, Mr. Lazoff and myself completely disagree. And I'm going to go back to this whole process issue. The problem is, the process is flawed. Sure, we're following what the city has defined, but what we're failing to recognize is the importance of a real master plan. It is more than a guideline document. I, you know, I've always had issue with this one, what city staff says it's a guideline document. It is what sets policy for what city council is supposed to do. And I guarantee you, any state, any city government, that is how it's interpreted. I've been involved with several other cities, and they have no problem with following that direction. So what happens is, is with the process we have, we piecemealed it, and we've given a lot more leverage to city council to basically bring in and approve smaller projects on a piecemeal basis. If, in fact, we did it on a macro scale and we did it as part of a bigger process approach, we would then have all the people within the city buying into how we want to develop that land. But you got to look at the big picture. I can't overemphasize it. There's a thing called smart growth. You've got to look at it. You got to make sense. If you want it, if you don't want it, say it, but do it on a big concerted effort. So, yeah, I guess we're going to have to disagree in terms of process. I think the process needs him changing, and it's why I am saying I think the council needs to consider truly doing a master plan update. Now, is this going to influence them? Probably not. It's my one opinion, but I think it would be the best approach. I think if residents recognize the importance and the value in it, they also could get on a bandwagon that could then truly, truly, they could then set the destiny. And I'm not, I don't care what it is, it's the majority rules. So whoever, whatever they come up with, that's what it should be. But I think our process needs to be reexamined. But it doesn't change my opinion right now. It's open land, you know? Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Ernie. So, Michael, for our edification and those in the audience, would you remind us of the next steps that would be required before this project could actually come to fruition?
Certainly. So what's
Excuse me, and I should have completed the sentence, and kind of where the public has the opportunity to weigh in.
Sure. It's important to point out that this is not consideration of rezoning property. The zoning currently is not appropriate for this land use. But before we can even consider rezoning, we have to have the master plan in alignment. And so the next step in this process is negotiations with the city council regarding the disposition of the land, likely through an RFP process and lease negotiations. And then there is the requirement for rezoning of the property, which will require notification of surrounding property owners, public hearing before the planning commission. And at that point, you have detailed plans in front of you for a specific use for the proposed rezoning. And at that point, you can either support or deny that before any project could move forward. It's a multi-step process. The land management process was the first opportunity for the public to provide comment, in which they did. The master plan is the second. Certainly, anytime this matter is before, the city council is another opportunity. But most importantly, with proposed rezoning in the future, that will be another opportunity for the public to provide comment through notification.
And this was added to the land management plan already, correct?
So for city council
I'd like to say one thing. That land management plan was a creation of the prior city council. It is not something that's defined by any master plan that's required by state. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Michael, but I believe I am right.
That is correct. It's not an obligation of state law. It's something that Boulder City put in place to provide a very early opportunity for the public to weigh in on the potential sale or lease of city-owned land.
And that's basically what I have been trying to say all along. It's a piecemeal process. It is not starting out as a true master plan, major amendment, revision, not amendment, a revision would do. It would open it up for all the community to look at and would look at the whole community as how do we want to look 10 years from now or 20 years from? And if we don't want growth, that should come out in that. But it's not just done in a couple of neighborhood meetings. It's done through a much larger process. And that's what I am trying to say, and that's what I think is missing. And so that is why I believe, yeah, we're following the process, but I don't believe we're following the process as it's truly intended for a master plan.
Well, my point in bringing it up is, this proposed use has already gone through the it was submitted to the city, gone through the land management plan, came to the planning commission, went to the city council, approved all along for the land management process, and now we're here. And then it's and there seems to be like a change in opinion. So I, you know, I guess it's confusing to me why you would add it to the land management plan if down the road, all these people spending their valuable time to just get here and say, I guess not, then what do you do? Take it off the land management plan? It's confusing to me. So I understand what Commissioner Bielski's saying, but we're following the process that's in place now. We can't possibly shut down everything and not make considerations for a process that's in place that allows this to go forward. And I'm sorry, I won't, I'll give you, I'm done.
You know, maybe part of where I'm at, and I've struggled with this because you're right, we are following the process, and I've said that. But the problem is, I've just been so concerned about the process and the way it is truly working, and because we keep overlooking what is so important, give the city as a whole the opportunity to look at all the properties, not just a couple of pieces. Don't do just the I-11 opening or the gateway project. There was a piece of it. You know, I spoke to the guy that put in that, the master, the guy that developed that master plan. He said the same thing when I brought this thing up. He says, yeah, it should have been part of an overall master plan, but no, it was defined that we'll just do it as this piece of the whole thing. That's what's wrong. We're not looking at the big picture because that's what's going to affect us 10, 20 years from now. It's going to affect our utilities, it's going to affect our water. You got to look at the whole thing. You can't just look at it project by project. Vegas is doing the same problem. They're putting in all these damn projects, and they're just doing a piece by piece meal because each one gets through. But they haven't really made a big decision, and what are they going to do to control it? And they got to, it's a bigger picture that you got to address it through. I got to get off my soapbox. I'm taking too much time. I recognize it, and I apologize. Yet different perhaps, but we have followed the process. We put the master, we followed the land management thing. Sure, we can put it on it, that's as a possible use. It's there. But now it's coming back before us to say, should we adopt this, changing it from open land to commercial? And that's where I think I'm making my points because I think they're valid.
Thank you, Commissioner Bielski, and thank all of you. You haven't heard from me. I'm really struggling with this one. You know, I realize, as Commissioner Crum says, that we've come this far, and people have put time and energy, the applicant, and we sincerely appreciate that. Commissioner Bielski brings up a point that I've felt for a while in myself, in that it seems like a piecemeal process. The process, while it is the process that's there, I don't necessarily agree with the I feel and have felt for a while that these things come before us again in a piecemeal manner. And I struggle. We say yes or no based on what we see at the time and what the potential project is. And I'm just really struggling with that process. So I would ask that city staff look into whether or not there's something that can be recommended to city council with regard to the process for master plan amendments. I think that the community does need a larger voice in this. You know, we have X number of people in the audience today, and those are the voices we hear, and we hear the voice of the applicant. What does the rest of the community feel? However, all that being said, the community will have the opportunity to state their opinion, both to city council and to us here on the planning commission, if this process goes any further. City council certainly has the opportunity to act on whatever recommendation we provide here tonight. And so whether or not the process goes through, I too am very concerned about water. However, I also like the project. So that being said, I think I'm really in support overall of the project. Converting this open land to commercial, though, I do struggle. So anyway, that that being said, I think it's time to
Nate, have a comment. One more thing. I mean, this is very simple. Does commercial belong around a golf course? And you can find many instances where there is commercial around other golf courses. Keep in mind, the city controls the land. We're not selling it. We have an interested party that wants to lease it from us and develop it. To me, this is a no-brainer. My only concern was, is there a chance that the golf course is going to dry up and we're going to be stuck with an investment, and it's going to be out there in an isolated area, not being used? And then we got to look at it eyesore for 20 years or whatever. That's my only concern. I love this idea. I think it's going to do wonders as long as we have water. So.
Any additional comments by the commission? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1219, which includes findings for a recommendation in favor of MPA 22-043.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
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 Three in favor, two against. Thank you very much for your time, your deliberations. So this will move forward to city council. With that, we move to the last item. I'm sorry, the item number six. This is matters pertaining to modifying the master plan, future land use map for a proposed grocery store and associated retail uses. Could we have the city staff report, please?
Yes. This property is approximately 16.3 acres, located southeast of Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive. And as with the last agenda item, it was before you before for consideration for addition to the land management process, and the city council did approve adding it to the land management process list. As I mentioned in the prior presentation, this also is not the final step in consideration of this land use designation. And I will outline the steps, the next steps later on in my presentation. But again, with the prior one, this is a consideration of changing the land use designation of the master plan from open lands to community commercial. And so if I can refer you again to the map for orientation And so if I can refer you again to the map for orientation, the top map shows the current land use designations within the city's master plan. And I want to highlight the parcel in question. It is the border, the black border is the parcel in question for your consideration. As you can see, a portion of the property is already designated community commercial. So what is being considered is making the entire parcel community commercial. I also want to note, because of some of the public comments earlier regarding the existing development at the direct southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive and Boulder City Parkway, that approximately five acres is also shown on this map and you can see it's outside of the black border. It is also designated community commercial. It has also been zoned for commercial and that's why you see the partial development there. Landscaping and parking on that private property was developed approximately 15 years ago and they didn't move forward with the commercial retail project. But they do have the zoning entitlement in place for that development. So kind of going back to what I stated with the prior one, you're looking at the appropriateness of taking this parcel from partially being designated community commercial to the entire parcel being designated community commercial. And again, with the master plan, this is just a land use designation, even though there is a lot of discussion about a potential grocery store, this is the appropriateness of having this parcel for community commercial uses, which could be office or retail type of development. In addition to that, as you're considering the land use redesignation, looking at the surrounding existing land use designations is one of the considerations. And with the prior project, staff looked at infrastructure demands if this property were developed and the city has the infrastructure in place to support its development. So as I noted before, the land management process, because this is city-owned land, was the first step in the process and went through, the public provided input, came before the planning commission and the city council. Now we're considering the master plan consideration of changing the land use designation. And in this case, because there is a ballot question that is moving forward that the voters will vote on in November, this property cannot be sold if the voters do not support the sale of the property specifically for a grocery store and associated retail. And again, as with this prior project consideration, the zoning in this case would require rezoning in the future. It's not appropriate for commercial and that would come back before the planning commission and there would be a public hearing and surrounding property owners notified of that. And so you have before you Resolution 1220 regarding the potential redesignation of the entire parcel as community commercial. And with that, I can answer questions.
Michael, I, I apologize. I, the land that's been, that was privately owned, that was for commercial, what is the status of that?
The property owners have not indicated any desire in moving forward development. We've been trying to contact interested parties that might be interested in moving forward with that in the near future.
And the property owner, has that property owner indicated that they had any intentions of selling it before they developed it or they would control the development on it?
They were looking at potential land leases, but I, my understanding is that there's a potential for sale as well.
Thank you.
Michael, could we go back to the map showing the, thank you. Could you show us on the upper map, the current map, current land use map, how much of that land is privately owned and how much of that, kind of that red area is owned by the city if any?
So unfortunately, I don't have a pointer, but if you look at the black outline.
Right.
That, thank you Holly, that is the city land within the boundaries of that black line. You can see approximately one-third of that land is already designated for community commercial of the city-owned land. So it already has that designation. The balance is open lands.
Right.
And so that is what's being proposed for change.
Right.
Not the entire parcel because part of it already is community commercial.
Right.
The triangle parcel directly at the southeast corner, Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial, is also designated community commercial and is already zone C2 for retail development. And that was what was approved about 15 years ago. It just didn't move forward with development.
And then looking at, sorry, go back to the, thank you. Then looking at the strip parcel that abuts and is immediately below Boulder City Parkway but north of Gingerwood, what's the ownership of that?
I believe that is separately. Susan, you have some information on that one?
I believe that's the mini storage project that's already there and has been there for many years.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So as we've heard about this project, and as you've just stated, city is looking at selling the parcel of land bordered in black, it sounds like. Is that the only disposition? You know, is there the possibility to lease that land?
With the ballot question, it allows the city to potentially sell the land if the voters approve. If the voters do not approve, the city cannot sell the land. But even if the voters approve for the sale, the city council could decide to move forward a lease instead. It just gives them the opportunity to sell it if they so choose.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Lassoff.
Michael, the proposal summary in this packet specifically says that we're talking about a future grocery store. Are we talking about putting any deed restrictions on this piece of property that a grocery store must be on this parcel? Because typically there's like, as you know, grocery, accessory, retail space. Are we talking about any deed restrictions on here?
Yes, because the ballot question is very specific. It says that it can only be developed for a grocery store and associated retail uses. So that would be a deed restriction placed on the sale of the property.
So my next question, I'm operating off of, I don't know, might be five or six-year-old knowledge at this point. But at one point in time, the city had an economic vitality commission and that economic vitality commission went out when Vons was vacant prior to Albertson's acquiring that building. And they talked to every grocery store chain that they could get a hold of and asked them to come to Boulder City. And the number that I got from that economic vitality commission is that Boulder City needed to grow to 35,000 people before we would get a second grocery store coming to Boulder City. Do you know of anything different?
I've been with the city for five years. We've had an economic development coordinator for four. One of the things when he started, because residents of the community said, we want a second grocery store in town, is he began pursuing interest in a second grocery store. We have had grocery store operators express interest in Boulder City. The challenge has been finding an appropriate location. Other private property was examined and for whatever reason, because the private property owners weren't willing to sell or couldn't negotiate for that grocery store going there, that's when city staff started exploring other options, including the potential use of city land for that type of use. Because grocery stores need to be along a major arterial in order to be successful, that limits us to Boulder City Parkway. And so we began evaluating city-owned property along Boulder City Parkway that would be suitable. Many of the city-owned parcels along Boulder City Parkway are not suitable, either because of conflicts with the railroad right-of-way, use for stormwater detention purposes. And so that's when it came to looking at this site as a potential site.
So we have a potential suitor waiting in line for us to finish this master plan amendment. Hopefully the voters pass it, at least in the eyes of the suitor, and then we're going to have a grocery store?
There's no guarantee that there's going to be a grocery store. There is expressed interest by both operators and developers who build for grocery stores. And obviously that would be another step in the process.
So a developer that builds grocery stores, but not an operator?
There's been a combination of the two.
Okay.
Expressing interest. So obviously, the developers won't build a grocery store unless they have somebody lined up. Because they're not going to make that investment unless they know that they have the leases to be able to move forward with the project. So even with the change in land use, even with the voters assuming they support the sale of the land, there's no guarantee that this will ever happen.
Well, my personal opinion is I hope it doesn't happen, just so that's clear. I'm not in favor of this. I think there's too many landmines in this, particularly with the deed restriction, to make sure that we're going to have a grocery store. The way I see it, we've got one of two possibilities. If the voters decide to approve a grocery store, that we have a deed restriction, nobody buys it, and now we've got this prime piece of real estate right near a major four corners in Boulder City and we're waiting until the population of Boulder City grows beyond my And it's just sitting there vacant because the city can't support another grocery store. Or somebody does buy it and then doesn't build on it and we still don't have a grocery store. So because maybe their corporation has a 100-year plan. That's all.
Mr. Paner?
Thank you. Did you say that out of all the city-owned property, this was the only site feasible on the Parkway?
Correct.
Okay.
Because, you know, factors also included existing infrastructure, utilities, access to Boulder City Parkway, visibility, and so this was the only one that was feasible.
Yeah, I think we discussed that the last time, but I was just checking.
Okay. So I have to ask this question, though I asked it in private earlier. Can we not proceed with bringing this to a vote prior to changing the land use designation?
Per the Title IX of the city code, this is the appropriate next step prior to the ballot question being voted on this November.
So you're saying that we cannot vote on it until the land use designation has been changed?
The master plan land use designation, correct.
What voting are you referring to? The voting tonight or do you mean the ballot question?
No, thank you for the clarification. I'm talking about the voting by the residents of the city on whether or not to sell this parcel of land. So just so, in the, you know, it seems to me that we've got a little bit of horse in front of the, horse in front of the cart or behind the cart where we're voting, you know, we want to potentially change the land use designation in the master plan without even knowing what the will of the people is. And it kind of goes back to Chairman, Commissioner Biaski's concerns. It seems like in this case, where we are proposing to sell this parcel of land, that we then thereby can lose control of it. And we don't know what form of a grocery store might end up going in there, you know, if it's something that, that we like, you know, absent some rather stringent deed restriction, that may then, as Commissioner Lassoff suggests, restrict interest in the parcel. So just so I understand, we would need to make this change before it can even go to the voters?
Correct.
In November?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we're basically putting a deed restriction on a property on a what I mean, I, if this were to come through and Boulder City got a second grocery store, is it really going to drive the prices of groceries down? Probably not. I mean, the cost of goods are coming from outside of Boulder City anyways. And that's really what people are saying, I want a second grocery store. No, what they're really saying is I want the cost of my groceries to go down.
Any other questions of staff before we move on to public hearing? Commissioner Biaski, any questions?
I have any questions of staff? I'm deliberating at this point or are we ready to deliberate?
No, it's time for the public hearing at this point.
Okay. I don't, that's.
So thank you, Michael. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this subject, please step forward and state your name. And I'm assuming that people who have spoken at earlier, at the earlier hearing can also be heard at this time?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Please state your name again for the.
Hi, Susan Davis. I managed Gingerwood Park for 13 years. We have people, it's been there 45 years. We still have tenants who have been there 43 years. We want to keep that area clean, fresh, nothing back there, nothing disturbed. I mean, digging up that process is going to be enough for those people. You're going to block their homes. We have gates at the end of Fleetwood and Teakwood where they can go out into the desert and walk, and a lot of them do. Now you want to block that off, interrupt their life. And for what? We don't need a grocery store. We've had Central Market, we've had Vons, we've had Albertson's. I've been here through all three. Why did, why did they let Albertson's buy Vons? So we couldn't get a grocery store there. That's exactly what they did. Albertson's bought the old Vons and now we have no store. It's not right. It's not fair. And I'm sure all the people. It's not right, it's not fair, and I'm sure all the people in Gingerwood and Boulder City will vote no one this. Why, why let them put a store if, or anything, to block nature? That's their nature. They can look out their back doors and see, they can walk out there and see the tortoise, they can walk out there and see the rabbit. Why put something there to block nature? You got the other side of Veterans where the golf course is, straight across, we got all those electric boxes. Build something there. It's down by the, uh, railroad pass down that way, opposite side, build there. That's not blocking anybody's view, nobody lives there. You got solar panels there, but to take away that view from a senior park that's been there 45 years is horrible. It's, it's, I can't even fathom it. It's stupid, there's no reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Pam Noonan, and I have questions I know I will not get answered for, but I am going to ask these questions anyway. Why is the sale of this property important? How does it impact? Because the last time I was here standing before you, there was no way that the grocery store and the RV park were gonna be separate agenda items. They were together. How important is it to the RV park that the grocery store go in that location? Why is it important that we sell this property when we, as a city, only own a portion of it, and we don't know what the original owners that are private are doing with it? Why are we rezoning it before we have a really good plan of what we want to do with it? And if there is a really good plan about what we want to do with it, if we know who these players are, why are we not, as citizens, informed of that? Why is this a secret? So, who wants the land? Why do they want the land? How much are they paying the city for the land? Is this money we really need? Is it more important than keeping that free space? What is that money that we get from this land going to be used for? How is it gonna benefit us in any way? I'm hoping that I am not the only person asking these questions. I'm hoping that somebody has an answer and can give me really good, honest, direct answers about why this is so important right now, and when it has sat there for 15 years with no plans. What happens when you change the zoning, and right now, it's zoned for flood control, and you make it the responsibility of the developer to come in and make sure that flood control is done appropriately, and yet, it's not? And it's no longer our land to go in and redirect. Then what happens to the properties around there? How are they affected? Maybe we don't get water in that area anymore, maybe we do, I don't know. And why isn't, if we truly just want another grocery store, and we want to be fair about the placement, and we have to have a population base that can support it and an infrastructure that can handle it, why are we not looking at Boulder City Parkway between St. Jude's and Pacific and down in that area where there is a whole bootload of new residential? And they could benefit from the convenience of that, and Lake Mead is down in that area with their recreational vehicles and their need to go to a grocery store. I don't have an opinion on what you should do, it doesn't matter, I, that's been made very clear, that it does not matter what we think. But I would like to feel that you have enough respect for the citizens to at least answer basic questions before you put things on ballots and before you lump things together and make them one package. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Sharon Gregory, I'm back again. This is a slippery slope, and like the gentleman said, you start doing piecemeal, where does it stop? Okay? Why is it not a lease? Why does it have to be a sale? That's a, that's a good question. And like Sue brought up, what about that other property across Veterans Memorial Drive? Or like Pam Noonan said, what about down further, closer to where the residents actually live? And the gentleman brought up that typically, grocery stores were approached and they want a 35,000 population base. We don't have that. Does somebody know something we don't know? Is future expansion in Boulder City going to change, and we're gonna have development that we don't know anything about as the voters? We want to know, we want, we moved to Boulder City because it's a small town. It had controlled growth. In Gingerwood, even though it's a mobile home park, those people are on fixed incomes, and they spent a good part of their savings buying those homes, and they like their view. They don't want to lose it. This is a slippery slope. It's dangerous for Boulder City because you're taking Boulder City into a new direction. And, and the gentleman brought it up, piecemeal. There does need to be a general, you know, vote by the, all of the voters before you start changing land use, you know, going from open land to commercial. And, and like you pointed out, do we know what type of grocery store? Do, do we have any say on that? I pointed out earlier that a Walmart coming in changes neighborhoods. It changes towns. It kills small businesses. Do we know that's not gonna happen? And like you pointed out, it could just sit there. Once you sell the parcel, it's done. It's slippery slope. Gingerwood just had all-new electrical put in, all-new pedestals coming in. It was a big infrastructure development. How do we know that at some point, when you start doing a sale here and a sale here, you know, at what point does somebody say, "Hey, we need to close that mobile home park. The land is too valuable"? These people love their lifestyle in Boulder City. It's small, it's, it's like Mayberry, okay? And we want that. We don't want it to change. If we want development, commercial, and box stores coming up here, all we gotta do is drive down the hill. It's not that far. It's actually encroaching on our lifestyle. We don't want to lose it. So, I'll say it again, it's a slippery slope, and everybody needs to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the virtual listeners. Those of you who are streaming the meeting, please call in now to 702-589-9629. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to comment on the planning commission.
Okay, state your name.
My name is Juan Henderson. I live in Gingerwood, and I am totally opposed to this development, and I agree totally with the last three people that spoke up. They can move it on the other side of the road, whatever. I'm totally.
Sir, sir, this is not the public hearing for that matter.
All right. Anyway, I'm totally against this development this way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wait a few more seconds. That will close the public hearing and bring this back to the commissioner for deliberation, considerations, and a possible motion. And city staff, Michael?
Yes, one point of clarification, I've been conferring with the city clerk, and we are gonna need to consult with the city attorney regarding the ability to remove the ballot question, since the ballots have already been prepared. So, to my statement before about whether it can move forward or not, that'll be dependent on consulting with the city attorney.
I'm really confused about this. You're, because you're saying that in order for the ballot question to be presented, this amendment has to be approved?
In order for the ballot question to move forward, per Title IX of the code, but because of the length of time in the sequence of setting up ballot questions, the ballot question had to come first and this process following.
I, I'm still confused. What is the rule that, that makes it that you can't put a, well, first of all, I just want to clarify, I wrote the argument against the land sale. And so, what, I'm just confused. It's a land sale question, what does the land, the master plan amendment have to do with that?
Provision in Title IX says that in order to potentially dispose land, sale, or lease, the master plan has to be in conformance.
Are you telling us we have no options in terms of voting? I'm not following what you're saying right now.
What I was stating before was because of Title IX, the opportunity to have the ballot question may be in question, but from a practical standpoint, the ballot question may need to move forward anyway, regardless of whether the land use designation is changed or not. So, that gives the voters the opportunity to vote on the matter.
So, you're making a clarification to a question the chairman asked?
I'm making clarification to my earlier statement after consulting with the city clerk.
Okay, I guess, just previously, when there was land sale questions back in 2010, I don't ever remember this being an issue.
It wasn't. That was going amendment to the code that occurred several years ago.
I understand, I understand. Okay, got it.
But, Mr. Mays, what kind of liability does the city or the planning commission have if we deny this and it goes to vote for the people? I mean, the way I hear it, it sounds like we could kill this right here, and even if the citizens vote yes, let's go get us a grocery store, if the planning commission and city council can't subsequently, after the fact, after the ballot, because I doubt we're gonna hear it again before the election, it basically goes nowhere. We can't sell that land.
No liability. The question is a valid question as an option, it doesn't mandate the city to sell it. The city could, even if the voters vote to approve the sale, the city council could decide to lease it instead. The only constraints is that if the voters approve the ballot question, the only thing we can sell it for is for the development of a grocery store and associated retail, no other uses, per the ballot question. But it does not obligate the city to do that. And so, I guess to reiterate, you are looking at this from the appropriateness of whether commercial uses are appropriate at this site or not. I wouldn't, I wouldn't factor in the ballot question at all.
With a deed restriction for a grocery store.
Yes, but, what you're evaluating is whether this use, commercial use, is appropriate for this site, not whether a grocery store is appropriate. Because if the master plan is changed...
Look, if we can get rid of the deed restriction for a grocery store, I can tell you with certainty that near four corners of a stoplight, usually, you're gonna see commercial. But if you're telling me that no ifs, ands, or buts about it, we're gonna have a grocery store there no matter what, whether it's two years from now when it finally gets developed, or 100 years from now when Boulder City grows enough to support another grocery store, I mean, that's what I'm hearing, is that property is gonna be a grocery store, period. Can we get rid of that from the text?
So, you're not voting on the ballot question, you're not voting on a deed restriction, and the master plan change doesn't mean that the ballot question is approved or not. The city could come back at a later point and propose another commercial use for that site.
That's fine.
That would meet the master plan. I, I guess that's what I'm trying to make clear here, is I know, just like with the prior application, we have very specific ideas of what could go here, but what the planning commission is weighing in on is the appropriateness of commercial uses as defined within our master plan, being potentially located at this site or not. And if you feel like that because of the surrounding uses, because of infrastructure constraints, you don't think that's appropriate, then you vote against it. But it's not just the grocery store, it could be any commercial use.
You've said grocery store and like retail. Can you give me some idea what that, what you mean by that?
The ballot question is going to say a grocery store and associated retail. So, retail stores, restaurants, that would typically be in a grocery store shopping center. But there are other uses that are permitted in the master plan for commercial uses, including office.
Okay, any other questions for city?
Yeah, Michael, this is your Bielski, one clarification for me. I think earlier, when you explained that this is about commercial usage, wasn't there an adjacent parcel that was commercial, or is it, you said something about, I thought, an adjacent parcel, and this was just bringing in alignment with that?
Yes, and I apologize, I can't show you the map remotely, but a portion of the 16 acres, the subject property in question, is already designated commercial, community commercial. So, what's being deliberated is whether the entire parcel becomes designated as community commercial. In addition to that, there is a privately owned five-acre parcel, is a triangular parcel directly at the southeast corner of Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial, that is also designated community commercial in our master plan and is already zoned C2 for commercial uses. And that was a project that was approved about 15 years ago that never moved forward.
And so, the portion that is not C2, what is the current designation of the portion that's not commercial?
It is open land, designation in the master plan.
Okay, so really, then, we, we have, we have basically immediately adjacent properties that are commercial around this other parcel.
this other parcel. It's open land. And by combining that, making that open land commercial, it just makes it all one contiguous, consistent parcel, I think is what I'm hearing.
Yes. If the planning commission recommends the designation change, the land use designation change, then the city parcel would all be community commercial versus a portion of it currently.
Okay. And so that is what we're adopting?
That's what the planning commission is considering, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And I think that's an important point because this is, even to the prior case, the difference there was we were going from a pure open land parcel to what would have been commercial. This one now, we have already adjacent commercial and only a small portion of it that now would be brought in alignment with it, at least in my way of thinking of it. Okay. Thank you.
Ernie, if I could interject something here. If you were to look at page, the map, on page 95 of your packet, you'll see the... The picture will become clearer.
Unfortunately, Paul, my computer is not in front of me. It's taken a turn south. So I'm on my phone and I'm at a disadvantage in that regard. Apologize.
See, we're looking, just for what it's worth, we're looking at 16 and 1/2 acres immediately south of what looks to be about 10 acres.
If I can...
Please.
The front piece of it that runs along the Boulder Parkway is the smaller portion of the entire parcel. And that smaller portion with very little frontage on the Boulder City Highway is what's zoned commercial, where the majority of the lot is currently open land adjacent to open land on all but two sides.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just point a clarification. We're not referring to zoning. It's not zoned commercial. It's the master plan land use designation of commercial, community commercial.
Forgive me. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So just because there's been so much back and forth about ballot initiatives and so on and so forth, just the final word, regardless of our vote here tonight, there will be a ballot question regarding the sale of this parcel of land. Am I accurate in that?
We're going to need to confer with the city attorney regarding that, but the ballots have been prepared. Again, this is the planning commission's recommendation on land use designation. It's not a vote on the ballot question.
Right. 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 And regardless of our vote here tonight, our recommendation to city council, city council can still go the direction they want to go on this. Am I correct in that?
Correct. They have the final say on any land use changes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, bring it back to planning commission. Any additional thoughts?
I just want to say I appreciate all of the comments from the Gingerwood residents. I completely understand because when there's an unknown, it creates fear. I do separate this item from the previous item because although, you know, we understand our role that it's about land use designation, you can't help but know what the intent is when it's been talked about at grocery store and about, questions coming up, and then the RV park has a presentation. The difference is you can see it and understand it and know what's coming. That's the distinction for me. I think it's appropriate to have commercial around there. However, with that being said, I think commercial is the appropriate land use designation. However, I am not in favor of this for the reasons mentioned by the commissioners and the residents and just because I feel exactly like what Chairman Matuska said. And it's what I wrote in the argument against the ballot question. It's putting the cart before the horse. I think it's premature and I... You know, the city is in a rough spot. I see both sides. But I think at the very least, even though I understand this code amendment that's happened since other land sales, that puts a wrench in this, I think at the very least, we have to listen to the voters. And if the voters don't want to sell the land, then we shouldn't be doing this. And so I think it's premature of us to do this before we even hear from our citizens. So I'm not in favor of it.
Well, I can't say I disagree. My comments were referenced in your well-articulated thoughts. And where I can differentiate is the simple matter of the discussion regarding selling with so much uncertainty. I just can't go forward in support of this at this moment. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yeah. I guess I'm... This is very strange. First of all, this is not a ballot question issue. That's what Mike was saying. It's very clear. We're still looking at, what is it that... We are just looking at, what do we need to do to adopt a change to the master plan? This is black and white. The black and white of it is, we have a piece of commercial, or open land in amongst some commercial, and we're just being asked, do we want it to remain open land or do we want it to be considered commercial? It's just like the other one. The other one, it was very simple. It's open land. It went to, was being considered for commercial. And by the master plan, of course, you could just say, hey, it stays the way it is. But in this particular case, because the process says, is the land use appropriate? To me, it's commercial and we're just pulling in another piece that is just logically should be commercial. So I'm not sure. I don't disagree in this particular case with it because it's a logical answer to what the process is asking us to do.
Thank you. Beth, anything to add?
I think everybody pretty much has said what I was thinking in terms of, it's kind of the cart before the horse. And I'm not in favor of this right now.
So that brings us to the point of making a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make that motion, a move to approve Resolution 1220, which includes findings for a recommendation of denial of MPA 22044.
I'll second that motion.
And so you're recommending denial? And do we have, we need to have some findings?
Can I make sure I heard? Is the recommendation to deny?
That's correct. The recommendation is to deny.
That's correct. And there are findings in resolution for whichever vote you choose, whichever direction, approval or denial, for a recommendation.
Good point. So we have a motion and a second on Resolution Number 1220. And the recommendation to city council is to deny this based on the findings noted in Resolution 1220 for denial. It's time for a vote. All in favor of the recommendation to deny? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. And that brings us to our last order of business, monthly progress report on development allotments.
No comment.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll just do one last check. The last order of business is final public comment. If anyone wishes to be heard on any item that was on the agenda, you have one last opportunity.
Chairman, the final public comment is for any public comment.
Thank you. Sharon Gregory, I want to thank you. Thank you for denying that. It's important and I think it was in the right step. Leave it to the voters, all of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no more comments, we'll close the public comment, period. I'm sorry, we need to go to the virtual audience. If anyone who's streaming this wishes to be heard on the final public comment, period, All right. Hearing no comments, we'll have the conference.
Yes, this is Ron Henderson. I live in Gingerwood and I hope that they don't vote a denial on this, appropriate for this land. I think there's better areas that they could build in. I appreciate that they don't vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Susan, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out for the benefit of the members of the audience, that this was a recommendation to the city council, but under state law, you will not be receiving a notice for that meeting. Per state law for master plan amendments, what we're required to notice you for is the neighborhood meeting, which the city chooses to hold at the planning commission meeting. So what you should do is follow up by looking online at the upcoming agenda packets for the city council and/or checking with the community development department or city clerk's office in a couple of weeks. And, you know, we'd be happy to tell you when the matter is going before the city council, but you will not be receiving a separate notice for that.
Thank you for that clarification. With that, we bring this meeting to a close. Thank you all for your time and your attention. City staff, I really want to thank you for bearing with us. I know it's been a tough process and we appreciate your understanding. I know you put a lot of work into this. So thank you very much for that time and effort. Thank you, commission, for your time tonight. Good night.